Sergeant at Arms. All right, let's begin with non-agenda public testimony. Jacqueline Isaac, Councilmember Scott Sherman, Francisca Salsedo, Nick. Please come down in any order. Adam Chavez, Herman Collins, Citizen. Please come down and speak in any order. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for allowing me to address the council today. How is everybody? I'm here today, there's a, you have an agenda item regarding Empower Charter School. Just want to let you know it's in Linda Vista in my community. It passed the city council unanimously. We're very much in favor of this. Thank you, Mr. Viser, for your help. This issue was held up at city, in the bureaucracy, at the staff level for quite a while. We went, the community came to me, the Empower Charter School people came to me, and specifically requested that we get involved. With that being said, we got the mayor involved, we got the city attorney involved, Mr. Viser, we got you involved, Mr. Barnett as well. Mostly to show that, look, we need to get this done, we need to get these kids educated in school now, they're already missing out. And I didn't want to see a couple of bureaucratic measures slow up the entire process. So we moved a bunch of mountains and a couple of molehills along the way down at the city to try and make sure that we get this done and we get everything from the city's perspective ready to go. I'm proud to let you know that with all that work and effort, we are here today in full support. Everything is done on the city's end. I know you already talked about this and pre-approved it earlier on, and again, I need to apologize for the city for the delays that were coming on us for what we took apart, but we've solved that now, we want it out of the way, and we just want to make sure that we get these kids in school and learning with the Empower Charter School. So if there's any questions you have, I'd love to answer them, but mostly I'm here to voice support from the community, from the council, and from the city that we want to see Empower Charter School get approved. So thank you all for giving me the time to come speak before you today. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Sherman.
Thank you. And I hope you all got my letter, right?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Please come forward and speak in any order. I read off several names.
Okay, Linda K. Williams, Alfred Court, San Diego 92120. Two very quick items. I wanted to say thank you to the board and Superintendent Martin for saying no thanks to the tank, the armored vehicle. I very much appreciate, I and many others, very much appreciate the boards and the superintendent's action on that. So that was one. And then the other one is, I hope that we can maybe look forward to some ideas from the school district and the board on how we can support 47 to try to get nonviolent criminals to not be incarcerated. What a beautiful opportunity for restorative justice in that sector. And also mentioning the millions of dollars that we will hopefully be able to add to the schools' budgets and also to mental health. So whatever it is that we as the community can do, please let us know how to jump in and help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
We're having some principal appointments, and I want to make sure that Superintendent Martin is addressing the issue of lack of training regarding fundraisers at schools and providing the annual fundraising plans, and also that principals are aware of prohibited activities that are occurring on the school grounds. This is really important for new principals that are moving to new campuses. I have a concern about Richard Nash, who's being considered for principalship. In an audit of the ASB, he reimbursed himself for $1,220 for catered food for VIPs and a championship ring that he gave to an NFL coordinator. Now that goes to the core of his integrity, taking the students' ASB money and spending it for adult reasons. $800 in staff lunches. If he's being appointed to principal, it bears some more scrutiny. There have been a lot of problems with ASB funds, and we don't need people in place that aren't going to safeguard the money that students have worked so hard to raise. That's really important. And another concern is Lincoln High School and the safety issues at Lincoln High School. That really, I saw that John Ross was here at the Ed Center today. I hope that Cindy Martin is addressing the safety issues that are occurring on the campus of Lincoln High School.
Thank you. Joanne Fields, Eddie Price, Terry Brooks, Imani Robinson, Jacqueline Isaac. Please come down in any order.
I'm Nick.
Bludgicik?
Yes, that's the one.
Wow, did I pronounce it right?
No, but that's totally fine.
How do you pronounce it?
The pronunciation is Vujicic.
Vujicic, okay.
Former Yugoslavian. President and the rest of the Board of Education here, I just want to thank you so much for your welcome. My dear friend is Jacqueline Isaac, I'm sure she is on her way here. She's right behind me. Just want to tell you that we've had a wonderful time at Hayson Mann Middle School where three schools came together to hear my address against bullying. We were on Channel 10 News, and Ron Roberts, county supervisor, was there as well. I just came from Indiana with the Governor Pence, and he put me on simulcast of 276 schools watching live. And I would like the Board of Education of San Diego to entertain that idea. We are looking at using the recording of my speech to show other middle schools in the region, but I'd like to come back and do the high schools and elementary schools. Just to let you know, in San Diego and across this country, bullying is an epidemic right now. And I'm the only speaker that I know of that I do a quick anonymous survey. I get children to bow their heads, close their eyes, put their hand up, and if their answer to my four questions is a yes, they put their hand in a fist. And in the survey that I did in that school, the question, the first question was, put your hand in a fist if you've thought of committing suicide. And 20% of the kids had thought of committing su-, sorry, 1 in 20, or 5% in that middle school. Typically, high schools are higher than middle schools. And in Hawaii, I spoke at the state legislature because of 12.8% of all teenagers already had attempted suicide. And according to our surveys, 8% of teenagers, up to 8% of teenagers in America have actually tried to commit suicide because of bullying. So I just want you to consider us and endorse some sort of project that we could do countywide here, as we've done in Indiana. We are talking to the District of San Bernardino as well. I just want to thank you for your welcome. Thank you for your open doors. I want to thank all the people who helped me to get here, and I look forward to continuing to inspire teenagers to never give up and to stop bullying and to not cause division but bring a love of unity all across this county. Jacqueline Isaac, I'm sure is going to talk after me.
She's here, right?
Good. Just want to thank you for your time, and please consider me a friend of San Diego. I live in Los Angeles, worldwide speaker, and my passion is the youth, to let them know to never give up and know that there's hope. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vujicic.
Perfect.
Hello, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here today, and we just heard from Nick. Words can't describe how amazing he is. We went across the Middle East together, and I learned that Nick can reach everyone from all walks of life, regardless of what they're going through. We brought Nick thanks to the help of the school board, thanks to the help of Joe Foulcher, Deborah Clemmons, and Principal Courtney Young as well. We were in the Mann Middle School yesterday, and we spoke with Supervisor Ron Roberts, who introduced Nick at the event. And I know Superintendent Cindy Martin was aware of that, that it started, the plan for it started in January. But it had such an amazing impact on the students. When you get middle school students to pay attention, it's a wonderful thing, and they were all very attentive. They loved the message, and I know that this is going to spread countywide. We're all supporting Nick, we're all behind him. Let's end bullying for good in the county of San Diego. Let's have him come back and reach all junior high schools and high schools. Thank you very much for your time. We will be having a gala on Saturday evening, Nick will be there, so will Mayor Faulkner, Sheriff Bill Gore, County Supervisor Ron Roberts, Councilwoman Murdo Cole, and Congressman Juan Vargas. And they are all a part of our program to mentor refugee students living right here in San Diego. They've all spent a day with them in the past month, and we're here to celebrate both the anti-bullying initiatives and this mentorship program at the Hotel Del Cronado this Saturday night. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, President Viser, Superintendent Martin, Vice President Foster, and members of the board. My name is Joanne Fields, I'm the Director of the District E Trustee Cabinet, also the Chair of the Morse Cluster. I'm excited to hear that October 18th, we have confirmed as a District E Cabinet Community Festival where we will create a venue so that our community partners, possibly new community partners can come, parents, students, and learn about the great exciting things that are happening across the board in the district. So this is a kickoff for the new school year. Didn't want to compete with all the back-to-school events. Originally, we wanted it for September 20th, and then found out there's a five other back-to-school events. So we do not want to ever try to compete because it's all the same market, it's all our kids, family, and community that we would like to participate, and really promote the good things that are happening at the schools, whether it's middle school college over at Lincoln, or the new partnerships that we're developing at Crawford and Morse. So we are partnering with San Diego Organizing Project, and I'm excited. I have some of our student athletes that are in the Ground Up Hoops Program. We are partnering with NBA veteran Alton Lister. He's confirmed to provide a free basketball skills camp for our kids. I attended the Lincoln High School Open House, was that last night? Last night, everything's a blur. The Larry English Foundation is looking to see if they're available for our football athletes, UCSD. So again, it's a great opportunity to make the connections, but really to keep the momentum going from back to school and just keep showcasing the great things. I'll make sure I reach out to Pastor Brooks. I'm excited to see Bayview here in Numbers, but this is what we must continue to happen throughout the year. So thank you for your time. I hope all of you will be able to attend and celebrate with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Imani Robinson. I am a member of the school side council at CPMA, and I'm also the co-chair of the Lincoln Cluster. And the last time I was here, I was a little weary of the middle college, and to my dismay, I'm learning some things that I'm not really excited about, of the students actually having to pay. I didn't pay when I got college courses, and we're in 100% Title I school, and parents are already struggling with paying for the school year and now actually having to have to pay for classes. And they also, the first class that they're taking does not even transfer over into college, and that's really upsetting as well. And I'm not really seeing any STEAM projects occurring at Lincoln. I'm really worried that you're not keeping up with your side of the bargain. I'm also spoke with Littlejohn about, last year, about conflict resolution that has not occurred, and now we're here because of, instead of prevention, he's focused on just controlling students.
Thank you very much, ma'am. That's your time. Thank you. We'll refer your concerns to the superintendent, but it's our understanding that-
We have a school side council meeting tomorrow, and there are funds that are available at Lincoln for different after-school programs, and I would like to see that money being used towards conflict resolution, for kids to find ways to deal with different behaviors, and also to-
Thank you, ma'am. That's your time.
Thank you.
Terry Brooks, Eddie Price, Francisca Salsedo, Adam Chavez, Herman Collins.
Thank you again for allowing us this time to speak. I'd just like for you to see that-
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Terry Wayne Brooks, Senior Pastor at the Bayview Church. As a matter of fact, I'd like for all those who came to support from our community to stand as I give these remarks. We thank you as well to Marty Foster and to Superintendent Cindy Martin, also to our Police Chief, Chief Littlejohn, for removing the MRAP from our community. But we wanted to get to the point of having conversations, that we don't make decisions that will, it seems like it would put us at odds when you put a vehicle like that in our community, where we do know we have problems in our schools, but violence that would call for such a vehicle is not, it seems as if you fear us or we should fear you. And that doesn't create an atmosphere that's conducive to learning, life, or love. And so we'd like to be not adversarial but allies with the school district, the school board, and our community, that we can come together and have talks so we won't offend each other either way, so we can understand each other. Superintendent Cindy Martin said it yesterday, echoed from Stephen Covey, that we would seek to understand then be understood. We understand now what was the purpose of the vehicle, but we got, we didn't get that before we got a picture of it sitting in our community. And so while it was intended for good, it kind of put us at alarm, and it made some of these young men, and even my son, wonder, should we move from our community if we have issues that call for such a vehicle? And so I just think if we open the dialogue, we can all coexist. We all want the same thing, but we all have to understand. We have some students from Somalia who have heard stories about parents and maybe even themselves running from vehicles like that, and then they come to school and they see one. What kind of fear does that put in their mind? What happens if people start to feel threatened and want to protect themselves and start bringing weapons to protect themselves, because we've said that this is a threat in our community? And so what we want to do is just come alongside and work together and make sure that we as a community, our voices are heard, and if we talk, we can come up with some common understanding, as you'll hear from my colleagues. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Herman Collins, President Viser. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. In the 2014 grand jury issued a report on school security, security there is no greater purpose. We have received the school district's response, and they're concerned that they're very thin and may require some further attention by this board. The grand jury basically said, reasonable classroom and school ground safety measures such as security doors, lighting and monitor hallways, check-in and checkout systems for visitors are important. However, the physical security measures alone, such as increasing armed security or arming school staff, should not be solely relied upon to ensure school safety for students. We understand that the district is conducting a security report that will be completed in late October. We hope that there is a complete vetting of this report with parents and the broader community stakeholders. It will allow us to understand how our districts and our schools will be affected and how they look and feel. However, in the short term, we would ask the board to look at the fallen responses that are in the grand jury report to ensure that parents and children are safe in our schools. Your recommendation 14-08, develop specific school security plan for emergency preparedness and detailed responsibilities, procedures, and a response plan, and post on school websites. As we checked today, the plan for Morse is just not up on the website. It's not on your school website either. It's something that you told the grand jury you would comply with, but you haven't. Furthermore, we were asking that these plans stop looking so cookie cutter. They need to be designed so that they're unique to the neighborhoods and the particular school population. Our concern is that when you're communicating with non-English speaking parents, if you don't have a plan that is specific to them or helpful to them, there's going to be probably more confusion than you need on the school site if in fact there is a disaster. Recommendation 14-09, developing training programs in conjunction with law enforcement that train school administrators, teachers, support staff, and parents on school violence prevention, crime prevention practices, security school procedures. Your response contains no mention of working in a jurisdictional with agencies like the San Diego Police Department and others. And then lastly, we have an acute problem regarding charter schools. Charter schools have been championed as the choice over failing school and educational programs, particularly in communities of color. 15% of our school population attends charter schools. Your programs right now for school safety don't extend to those charter schools that may not be on school district property. We would ask that you create an umbrella so that all children within the district boundaries of the city of San Diego and the Unified School District are protected under an adequate school safety program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Hello.
Please state your name for the record.
My name's Eddie Price, and I'm a proud member of Bayview Baptist Church and 92114 zip code. And as I look at your mission statement, it says, "All San Diego students, not just students of San Diego Unified School District, but all students will graduate with the skills, motivation, curiosity, and resilience to succeed in their choice of career in college in order to lead and participate." And we as a, I as a father would like to know what you're going to do as far as the, have you acquired any other weapons? Because weapons is nowhere in the mission statement. Have you acquired any other weapons, whether the, under the 1033 program or other sources? And we would like to see the, I would like to see the board get into a stronger dialogue with communities. You know, your schools are located in communities and neighborhoods, and you're a neighbor. You're not just a myopic piece of property sitting there, you're actually a neighbor. So whatever affects the school also affects the surrounding neighborhood, and that should be taken into account too, from a psychological standpoint as well as an economic standpoint. And my last comment on my smartphone, I like smartphones, they make me smart. We would like to understand or be notified during these potential community meetings of the budgetary items and the budgetary conflicts. When you promise something, can you pay for it? How will it be paid for? Who's paying for it? Oftentimes, we fall victim in communities of concern to being just told anything that will pacify us. And I think those days are short, if not gone already. So we would like some answers, we would like, as my pastor said, we would like to work with you to create some of this new 21st century sociological, is that a word? Is that a word? Because I'm in the school district, I need to be using a real word. And psychological effects as we go into the 21st century, we can't do things the way we did last century. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Francisca Salsedo, Adam Chavez. Okay, I don't think that's Adam and Francisca. All right. That concludes public testimony on non-agenda items. Welcome, let's begin today's meeting. I think we want to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. We have the Navy JROTC Color Guard from Patrick Henry High School. Will you please now present the colors? Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then Color Guard, please remain, because then we're going to have the National Anthem sung by Farb Middle School.
Present. Ready, cut. Colors.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we'll hear from Farb Middle School Choir the National Anthem.
Ready, cut. Right. Base. Forward. March. Left, right, left, right, left, right, left.
Thank you, Patrick Henry JROTC and Farb Middle School Choir. I'd like to welcome everybody present today and those watching the broadcast and call the September 23rd, 2014 regular meeting to order with all board members present. If you wish to address the board today, and your name is not already on the blue sheet located at both entrances to the auditorium, and you have not already submitted a request for public testimony form, please complete the form and submit it to Josefina, Board Action Officer, for this evening. Speakers on agenda items will be called on to speak during the discussion of that item. Once the discussion begins on an item, no additional public speaker requests will be accepted by the board. Non-agenda item testimony was heard at 5:00 and will also be heard at the end of the meeting. At this time, I'd like the ASB student representatives to the board to introduce themselves. Please tell us about yourself and what's going on at your school, both academically and socially. We have Hian Mai from Kearney High School, ASB president, and Morgan Tucker from Claremont High School, ASB president.
Hello, my name is Hian Mai, and I am the, sorry, I'm the Kearney ASB president. At our school currently, we have, we have gone from four principals to two principals, and now we're currently under one principal. Therefore, there's a lot of change going on at Kearney academically as well as socially. There's a lot of things going on through ASB because it is the beginning of the school year, and so one of our biggest priorities would be Anti-Bullying Month, and that is all I have to report.
Thank you very much, Hian Mai.
Hi, I'm Morgan Tucker from Claremont High School, and right now, we're, socially we're preparing for Anti-Bullying Week or Month, and we are celebrating it the last month of October. Also, we're looking forward to our homecoming, which is also during that month, and academically we are adjusting to our new staff, which has brought a lot of change and good things to our school. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Morgan Tucker. Student presentation, we heard that earlier. Now on to the proclamation, recognizing Deputy Superintendent Phil Stover for his dedicated service to San Diego Unified School District and his many decades of service to kids and public education. Is there a motion? All right, let me read the proclamation. Whereas Phil Stover has loyally served San Diego Unified School District since 2006, Phil has always been willing to serve in multiple roles based on whatever the district has needed, from operations and logistics to finance, from community meetings to a school safety study, to an amazing rendition of the Star Spangled Banner when the scheduled singer did not arrive. Phil has never hesitated to take on difficult and unpopular tasks in the service of our San Diego Unified Kids and Students. He has the ability to come up with creative solutions in a very difficult budget environment. He fostered cooperation with various stakeholder groups. He coordinated productive partnerships with employees and frontline staff that led to better and more cost-efficient ways for the district to operate. Phil served as a mentor for staff members following in his step- Phil served as a mentor for staff members following in his steps, as well as oriented board members like myself, to the district and its operations. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the San Diego Unified School District Board of Education and Superintendent of Public Education Cindy Martin, that we recognize the important work Phil Stover has provided and hereby declare September 23rd, 2014, Phil Stover Day to honor his service and the example he has set for all of our employees. Can we please vote? And that passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you so much. You knew I wouldn't pass up the opportunity probably to say a word or two, a poem or First of all, I want to recognize my beautiful wife who's here with me tonight. She's been my joy for 45 years and I'm truly blessed by having her as my life's partner. Since 19, since 1979, I've probably spent more time in school board meetings than in sleeping, although the two are not mutually exclusive. As I stand here and think back over the nine times my contract was renewed or extended as a consultant here in the district from 2006 to 2009, I'm reminded of the words from the Eagles hit song, Hotel California. Last thing I remember was running for the door. I had to find the passage back to the place I was before. Relax, said John Evans. We are programmed to receive. You can check out anytime you like, but you can never leave. I'm very grateful for the opportunity the district has given me to help shepherd it through some of the most difficult and challenging times. In the six years between 2008 and 2013, we cut, transferred, or reduced our balances in excess of $500 million. It was a series of very challenging processes. One year, we called it PBB, Priority-Based Budgeting, where the board used dots, I still have the dots, to indicate their budget priorities. Another year, it was Brace, Budget Reduction Alternatives to Conserve Education. I came up with that. Where we conducted an intense review with departmental leadership and finance of 123 district departments. I only remember coming close to fainting once in my life. That was during Brace, where after 12 hours one day of standing in front of the whiteboard, I realized I was becoming overcome with the smell of magic marker. It was both intoxicating and intense. Late last week, I began the job of cleaning out and organizing my computer desktop for my successor. I came across a rather poignant document from April 1st, 2011, created at 2:00 PM in the afternoon. I barely remember writing it. It was a difficult and discouraging time as we were all devastated with the prospect of another round of layoffs that so disrupted the lives of our staff and our students. I called the document the San Diego Unified Educators Prayer. Here is what I wrote to myself that afternoon. I am called to be the lifeguard for thousands of students and staff. If I can't swim well enough, we're all in trouble. I am called to be sure, to support, and lift up. Yet at times, I am uncertain, need support, and feel downtrodden. I am called to be the shepherd, while I am really one of the sheep. I stumble and occasionally lose my way, the flock scatters. I am called to renew minds, yet sometimes need a transformation of my own. I am called to comfort those with pink slips, yet I am discomforted by my own. I am called to care for when I need cared for. I am called to be in control when I have no control over anything. My calling refreshes and renews me yet weighs me down. My peers are my friends and my competitors for scarce resources. I want to celebrate their victories yet long for my own. God grant me the wisdom, strength, and discipline to accept my calling in spite of my own fears, stresses, and limitations. So with gratitude to all the amazing people that it's been my privilege to work with over my years here in the district, especially for Maria, Sharon, and all my other direct reports with whom I've had the privilege of serving, it is indeed my prayer that God will grant you all the wisdom, strength, and discipline to accept your calling, whether it be as trustee, teacher, site, or central office staff, in spite of your own fears, stresses, and limitations, on behalf of all of our students and their education, for they are indeed the one great cause that unites us all. Thank you for the privilege of serving them with you. Goodbye and blessings to you all.
All right, Trustee Evans?
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple of words. When I first came on the board, when Richard and I first came on the board in 2008, Phil was a tremendous asset and support to us as he oriented to us to how things worked and also how some things didn't work within the district. But I think one of the true hallmarks of anybody who has served the district is someone who is willing to do anything that the district needs, willing to serve in whatever role is helpful to the district. And I think this has been true of Phil, it's been true of some other key leaders who have been in the district. But I think people really need to understand that Phil has been here through one of the most difficult economic and challenging periods for this district and certainly during the time I've been here from 2008 and forward. And during that time, what really saved the district was a combination of the leadership of the Superintendent Bill Koba, the Deputy Superintendent Phil Stover, Deputy Superintendent Nellie Martin, and some others on the staff and, Nellie Martin, okay. She left a long time ago. Dr. Nellie Meyer, the Deputy Superintendent along with Deputy Superintendent Phil Stover, was transitioning into the fact that the people that worked at that time, as well as Chief of Staff Bernie Reinderson, really held the ship together during a very difficult period and really set the stage for Cindy Martin to come in as the superintendent and our new staff in terms of moving forward. So it's very difficult to describe all that Phil accomplished during that time. We put a few comments on here, just talking about the variety of things that Phil did. But I do remember, as we mentioned on here, one time when we were at an awards ceremony and we usually had a student sing the National Anthem and something happened with the traffic and the student wasn't there, and I half jokingly said to Phil Stover, well, would you sing the National Anthem right now? And so I walked over and I said, now we'll have Phil Stover sing the National Anthem. And it brought the house down in terms of his very great rendition of the National Anthem. But that was just a little piece of what he's, his abilities and what he's been able to do for the district. So we really appreciate everything you've done, Phil, and go with God.
All right, Trustee Burr.
Yeah, I just want to echo John's comments and I thought, Phil, your prayer that you read was really clarifying because like, you know, we have gone through a very difficult time over the past several years, particularly 2009, 10, 11, 12. And, you know, my son went to school this morning along with well over 100,000 students in this district and he has no idea how difficult things could have been. Has no idea the, what class sizes could have looked like, what restrictions to the curriculum could have looked like, what cutbacks to school safety and, you know, just having decent facilities could have looked like. And he shouldn't, he shouldn't have to think about that. None of our students should have to think about that. But the reason that they don't have to think about that is because, yes, we pulled together as a strong community here at San Diego Unified, both our staff and our students and our parents and our internal community, but the entire community of San Diego. We pulled together to get through this period so that our students wouldn't have to confront the kinds of crisis that we were facing. But sometimes when we talk about how we pulled together as a community, we don't recognize the extraordinary work of certain individuals. And Phil took on the really enormous burden of first understanding this entire district and understanding the crisis that we faced. You can't, you can't appreciate the contribution that Phil made without understanding his willingness to confront the reality of the crisis that we were facing and to probably understand that on a deeper and more comprehensive level than anybody else. And because Phil took on the responsibility of understanding the crisis that we faced, he, and by taking on that burden of understanding the crisis that we faced, probably again in a way that very few people did, he then threw himself into helping us get through it and developing creative solutions, developing difficult solutions, having tough conversations with all of us but always coming from a place of hope and a great spirit and, again, a sense of belief in our students. And so, the reality, and I know that Phil doesn't care about this, the reality is that our students that are experiencing the opportunity to have a great education today don't know who Phil Stover is. And in the end, they shouldn't have to either. But we understand what you've done, Phil, and you understand the situation that you helped us get through. And because of that, our, a new generation of San Diegans have a brighter future and you've made an incredible contribution to us and I thank you for that.
Trustee Barnett?
You know, in life, it's, I've found, I very rarely have met Renaissance men. And Phil is, I think, the perfect example. Artist, singer, author, published author of new book on Amazon, by the way. I have a signed copy here, Religion and Revolution in Mexico's North. Just started reading it. And the thing that I found most impressive beyond those skills of Phil is when we were going through the whole discussions of school closure at different clusters and even the, most recently, the security review process that Phil oversaw. And Phil had an amazing way of, I guess I'd almost call it innate common core skills of, in the environment, in the room, picking something out, a poster that had to do with a historical figure in a library, and then bring that into the current conversation. To me, that is the most exciting thing about education when, whether it's a student or my own children, be able to say, wow, here's a real world discussion today and here's someone to bring in as a historical figure. And that's just a picture on a wall and apply it to that. So I've enjoyed watching and learning from and being around a true Renaissance man. And I wish you luck with your next, your next book, which will probably be something about San Diego Unified, but hopefully the names will be changed to protect the guilty. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, everybody, for your comments. I know they mean a lot to Phil and to all of us. I think it's really, really important that we remember, boy, I got on the school board in 2010, right in the middle of some of the most difficult financial challenges. People thought we were nuts, Mr. Barnett, for wanting to get on the school board in the middle of difficult financial challenges. But I think, I think it's, I think it's wanting to take on and be a part of that conversation and try to, you know, help preserve and fight for the things that we knew were important for kids and Phil was a part of that process the whole way. So thank you. Also, I want to mention that this is Phil Stover's handiwork, in large part, as well as Garrett Patel and Cindy Martin and Superintendent Koba and a lot of staff members. We banned styrofoam lunch trays and the ban was implemented this year. That means, you know, over 10 million styrofoam lunch trays are no longer going into our landfills. So thank you, Phil, for honoring your pledge to do that before you retired. Thank you, sir. You are a man of your word. All right, so we move on to adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda and move Item H2, H3, and I to the front? All right, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. Okay, great, so let's take up Item H2. Public hearing and resolution of intent to sell real property and acceptance of negotiated proposal to purchase Bay Terrace Number 11. We have a motion, is there a second? Any discussion or comments or questions? Okay, okay, please vote. Arnie. All right, please clear the slate, we'll have to vote again. Everybody, please vote. That passes 4 to 1. Item H3, public hearing and resolution of intent to sell real property and acceptance of negotiated proposal to purchase former Stevens Elementary School. We have a motion, is there a second? Any discussion or comment? Please clear the vote. Board members, please vote. That passes 4 to 1. On to the Superintendent's Consent Agenda. Would any board member like to pull any items on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, we do have a speaker in support of Item I-36, the agreement with National Conflict Resolution Center to provide restorative community conferences, restorative justice program oversight and staff training, consultation, and student support.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Martin and esteemed board members. First of all, I was just so thrilled to see everything that is included in this agreement. There is lots of brilliant healing ideas and hard work and Dr. Joe Fulcher's work and his amazing team, Chief Littlejohn and NCRC's Bridget Lambert and her staff, I know, have worked long and hard on this and I'm very excited about it. This is moving us, I believe, forward in a very substantial way towards the vision of becoming a truly restorative district. Just two quick suggestions, if I might. Best case scenario, if restorative justice works so well in the selected clusters that you don't have the capacity filled with the students that would be recommended for expulsion, I trust that our district will be very quick to move flexibly and speedily to expand to other clusters so that those slots will be filled for those life-changing services. And the other quick idea is having a teacher in the district for a bazillion years. And the other quick idea is having a teacher in the district for a bazillion years, all those wonderful classes that are available for district credit. For teachers that are not in some of the specially-selected schools, and I do affirm the wisdom of just starting with some specially-selected schools, but other staff members who are excited about this concept and who would really love to take advantage of this new learning, maybe have some trainings be available in the, in those types of classes so that that could be an ongoing thing for people who self-select. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. We also have a speaker on item I33, Citizen.
I was reviewing the purchase orders, and I'm very pleased to see that schools are purchasing musical instruments for schools. That's really important. I'm also seeing more information being posted on the website so that students are made aware that they do not have to purchase guitars and instruments and other things in order to participate in their educational experience. I have some questions about expenditures for E3 Civic High. For example, on page 29, there's a shoulder-mounted camcorder for $1,100 and another camcorder for $4,900, and another expenditure for a lens kit of $24,000. I'm just curious where that money is coming from. Is that from Prop Z money? How, how is this equipment being purchased for E3 High? That's a lot of stuff for this school. And, and the public schools that you're responsible for providing supplies for could use this money as well. So I'm just curious, where is this, like, maybe $30,000 coming from to buy supplies for a charter school?
All right. Thank you very much. If there are any board member comments or questions? Okay, is there a motion on the superintendent's consent agenda?
It's on move.
Do I have a second? Okay, please vote. Okay, that passes five zero. All right. So let's go back to Section D, Report of Closed Session Actions and Superintendent and Board Information Reports. Administrative Assignments, Superintendent Cindy Martin.
Thank you, President Beiser. Good evening, everybody. I have administrative assignments to report out tonight. Public employee appointments. Manager from Accounts Payable, for Accounts Payable, Nancy Monaghan. Manager for Magnet and School Innovations, Sarah Trueblood Luke. Principal at Carver Elementary School, Maria Elba Vera. Principal at Hancock Elementary School, Jody Buxton. Principal at Ross Elementary School, Rosemary Cruz. Principal at Sarah High School, Vincent Mays. Principal at Pacific Beach Middle School, Kimberly Meng. Vice Principal at Erickson Elementary School, Carrie Shea. Vice Principal at Bell Middle School, Kenneth Lewis. Vice Principal at Kearney Complex, DMD, oh, you're paying attention now, Kearney, Robert Mesa. Vice Principal at Mission Bay High School, Maria Landau.
Thank you. Now onto the superintendent's information report.
I think we're going to load that onto the PowerPoint, and I'll need the mouse.
Whenever he calls it. Whenever he calls it.
All right.
Thank you, President Beiser. We have two items to report out for closed session today. The first one is with respect to the Sevita property located at the intersection of Sevita Boulevard and Villa Alta. There is, there are no terms or agreement to report out. However, the board voted three-two with Mr. Barnett and Mr. Beiser opposed to authorize staff to begin preliminary assessment of the property.
All right, keep reporting out. No, it's, it's three-two. Is the report out? Yeah.
The second item is that the board authorized the initiation of litigation against Young Market Company to obtain a right of entry upon real property located at 1709 Main Street, San Diego, 92113. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Donovan. All right, Superintendent's Information Report with PowerPoint.
Thank you. And a brand-new remote control. Thank you. Appreciate it. The focus of my report is, first of all, just great to be back to school and focus on our school visits. As I reported last year, in implementing Vision 2020, a critical component of our work is making sure that we're out at schools, supporting the teaching and learning, the core function of our district. And so Currie Elementary School on September 11th was one of the schools that we visited and was able to get into several classrooms, look at our focus of our first learning cycle is academic, social, and physical environments worthy of our students. And several examples of that, the artwork around the school, the campus looked absolutely spotless, immaculate, beautiful artwork, very fine touches around the school and the classroom environments, very, students were ready, or classrooms were ready for students for learning on the first day and in the first weeks of school. So Currie was one of the schools that we visited. And then I also attended with President Beiser, Hurst Elementary School. That same evening, there was a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Champions program, which is one, a new after-school provider, brand-new to the district. We have several after-school providers in San Diego Unified, but Champions is one of our new partners. They're actually affiliated with kinder care, and I was able to tour what they're going to be providing in terms of an academic program that evening. It was also that evening at Hurst happened to be back-to-school night, so I appreciated all the families that came out. Really great example of a quality neighborhood school. Principal leadership there, and the teachers or so. First of all, it was a very, very, very warm night, and they were installing the air conditioners literally on top of the building during back-to-school night, but they weren't on yet. So I had, was able to be in a first-grade classroom where a teacher was doing her back-to-school-night presentation, and it was quite warm, but the parents were just so thrilled with the instructional program that was being offered. And this after-school part, daycare partnership that just started is one that will possibly expand. We have an agreement with Champions, and it's, this is the first site. So I want to thank Principal Jorgensen for hosting that evening and highlighting a great new program. Then I also attended Montgomery Middle School on a site visit. Was there, the very next day, being able to get into classrooms in our middle schools, looking at the common core instruction, academic environments in particular, again, the social and physical environments, being able to get a pulse of the schools and getting into a host of classrooms with the area superintendent and the chief of staff at, with the principal at Montgomery Middle School. And then after that, I was invited to speak at the San Diego Public Library with one of our strong community partners, the Friends of the San Diego Public Library. I was asked to speak and address them at their yearly meeting. And one of the things that I loved was they have a writing contest every year, and they're promoting their writing contest this year. And I found out that not very many San Diego Unified students participated in the writing contest last year, and I think it would be great for our students to participate in the Friends of the Library writing contest. Some more information will be forthcoming about that. But I enjoyed going to our brand-new library downtown, and the director of that library, I consider a sister and a friend in the work that we do. Public libraries and public education go hand in hand, and the way the public library has transformed itself to be a quality partner in the work that we do, offering after-school programs in many of our neighborhoods. When we talk about quality schools in every neighborhood, it's about, we have to get our schools right, and the libraries are working on matching their initiatives to the initiatives that matter to us. So I enjoy being able to interface with our public library system and appreciate the contribution they provide to our students. The San Diego Women's Foundation also invited me to come and speak at their grants kickoff. And the reason why this is quite relevant is that they've decided to make a funding priority for this year of all of the scholarships that they will be, or sorry, all of the grants that they will be awarding as a, the San Diego Women's Foundation, they're focused on something I know this board will love is community leadership development, that every grant offering that they give will be focused on developing leaders from within the community. And their focus is, they realize from research and from experience that the best leaders and most relevant and significant change that happens, happens from community leaders that we grow up from within. And so they're very interested in focusing on developing leaders from within the community and then funding priority programs and initiatives, sometimes longstanding initiatives or new initiatives. And I think they, asking me to come and speak means that our message has been made clear that we are a district that believes in community-based reform and community strategies that help transform a community to, to make itself better. And this Women's Foundation has committed real dollars to any local agencies that would be supporting growing leaders from the community. So I was honored to be able to speak, and I felt that the offer to speak showed that there's alignment between what we're looking for and what our community agencies will support. The Pro Kids Academy is, is an organization I'd heard a lot about for years. I'd never made it out there last year, but I was happy to go and visit this past week. Pro Kids Academy is right across the street from one of our schools in City Heights. And to see the program that they offer there, it's not one of our district-sponsored programs, but many of our kids participate, and it's for a very low fee. Students are members of a golf club, literally right there in the middle of City Heights at Kalina Del Sol Park, and there's an academic component to it and a structural component, it's more than just a daycare. It's an academic, it's a membership program, and it's the skills and attitudes that come from golfing that they teach the students, that there's, there's life skills that you learn by being a golfer. And so they're teaching those life skills through the Pro Kids Academy. And it's one of our community partners, even though it's not in one of our schools, to know that community partners are surrounding our schools and are, are creating relevant opportunities for our students. I was honored to be able to go and visit that program. And then I attended Rosa Parks Elementary School for the Mexican Independence Day Celebration, and I love the picture of the girl on the bottom right. And they did their traditional dances, and thanks to the second-grade teacher, I believe the second-grade teacher, Ramona Espinal, one of the, by literacy teachers there, helped coordinate with a whole team of parents that just decorated the Rosa Parks Auditorium. Vice President Foster attended with me, and just seeing what the students were able to put together to honor their heritage. And a true example of a, of a neighborhood school, the, the auditorium was certainly filled with students, but then the whole other side of the auditorium was the parents coming in, and parents and students celebrating culture together. They couldn't fit the whole school in the auditorium. They had to do the performance three different times. So fourth and fifth, and then second and third came in, and K and one, because it's such a large school. On last Friday, attended Knox Middle School. Knox Middle School is the third annual United Nations International Day of Peace Rally. And this is a group that's been working with a larger group, a larger coalition nationally to help with, advocate to create the U.S. Department of Peace, like the U.S. Department of Agriculture, U.S. Department of Finance, Department of Education. There's a effort to create the U.S. Department of Peace, and some of the organizers in this community, you see pictured there with the principal, Harry Shelton from Morse, and Gary Rollins from Knox, and the vice principal from Knox, and that student there wearing her peace shirt, she was interviewing me on what peace means to me and what we're doing to help create peace in our neighborhood. And the theme was, peace begins with you, and what do we do as a school to help create peace? So I've pledged my support to the Knox Middle School Peace Ambassadors Program that meets. They meet during their lunchtime, and they come up with ways to, to promote and support peaceful things on their school campus and in their community. And I'll be returning to the school to get to know the Peace Ambassadors Program at that school and the student leadership around that. And yesterday, I think it was yesterday, yeah, we visited Benchley Weinberger Elementary School. I'm so impressed with the communications focus at this school. You see pictured there, the students who, there were some students that, when we first got there, tied to our first learning cycle, creating social, academic, and physical environments worthy of our students. And all the schools are working on a warm and welcoming environment, and those two students are the students that were the ambassadors. When I got there, they met us at the front, welcomed us into the building. There were student newspaper reporters that interviewed us so that they could write an article for their newspaper, and we were able to get into many classrooms at Benchley Weinberger and appreciate the principal, Patton's support there and telling the story of her school and the transformation that, one of the themes of Benchley Weinberger is it's a school with heart. We talk about teachers with heart, parents with heart, students with heart, and it's a theme that permeates the entire campus. We were there during the recess time, we were in the classrooms, and you could absolutely see that the social environment is very much honors students and their voices. And then last evening, I was able to address the PTA Council Association at the Ballard Centers. I think it was their first back-to-school meeting, and being able to say thank you to our PTA volunteers and, and parent leaders when we talk about a district that focuses on creating conditions where all students become contributing members of society. I think our PTA leaders are examples of that. They're contributing, they're participating, they're part of their school community, and a community-based school reform model doesn't work without active parent participation. So I was honored to be invited to say thank you to them last night as they launched another strong year of supporting Vision 2020, quality schools in every neighborhood. That's my report. Thank you very much, everybody.
All right. A board member reports. Trustee Evans.
Thank you, President Beiser. As we said last time, I think we got off to a very good start of the school year. I think one of the things we should point out, that there, one of the things when the school year starts very well is that there's not as much to say about it. And we, in, in previous years, we get a lot of emails and complaints about things as they're going at the beginning of the year. So I think that was a very, very good sign for the beginning of this year. A lot of the clusters in, in the communities I work with have started having their meetings. The Madison Cluster is very excited about their whole plan to convert their middle school program so that they have a solid middle school program and some of the adjustments of moving sixth grade from elementary school to a middle school, and that's being very well-coordinated by the community and also by the central office. The other clusters will be having their meetings and getting going on that, too. I think that tonight, when we heard from, there was a comment from someone from the, the Bayview Baptist Church, that the schools are part of the neighborhood, part of the community. And I think for too many years, the, the schools were institutions that were located inside of various communities, and there were central decisions made about what happened in the different communities. And we really are working at changing that, and that really depends on every community, not just the, partly the attitude of the central office, but partly the attitude of each community, which is standing up and saying, this is what we want for our community, the teachers, the parents, the neighbors, all working together. So I think we have a lot of exciting things that are going to happen this year. Thanks.
All right. Vice President Foster.
So I have a little bit of a cold if my voice sounds a little strange. I promise to work on that so the next time I'm here, it sounds wonderful like it normally does. Okay, so anyway.
I have a phone to say next.
So I, I attended an event called Phenomenal Leading Ladies Award Ceremony, where Council Member Cole, Angela Harris, Darnisha Hunter, and Jean Young. Jean Young is the mother of Tony Young, where they were honored. And I, what really struck me about this event was it was about their contributions to their community. And many of them have been extremely involved in our schools and contributed in ways that have really set the foundation for when we talk about schools are hubs and we work with our schools and improving them. It was just really interesting to see that there was a connection with all honorees in terms of their commitment and dedication to excellence at our schools and our, and our youth. So I just wanted to, to share that. And then also, two weekends ago, I spent the weekend with Bay PAC, and it's called the Sister Love Club of Knox Elementary School. So I spent the weekend with these really wonderful young ladies, and there were great workshops, guest speakers, arts and crafts, and we did some hiking together and even took a dip in the pool. So that was a lot of fun. I wanted to share that. And then also, the opening of Lincoln Steam Middle College High School. We've heard a lot of talk about that, and it really, truly was a great accomplishment in terms of the, of the opening. There was also, and I, and I haven't seen this, a welcoming reception for the principal, John Ross, where over 30 organizations came together that wanted him to know that we really appreciate all the work that's gone into Lincoln and what can we do to help? What can we do to help? And it's so, so easy to point out, you know, what is not perfect, what, you know, issues that you see, but to be able to communicate your expectations with respect. And, and Richard Barrera said something tonight that I thought was significant, and this was the theme of the welcoming reception for the principal, John Ross. Barrera said something about great, having a great spirit. There was a great spirit in that room. And when we're talking about transforming, not just And when we're talking about transforming not just Lincoln, but transforming education, it's really our ability to have this collective impact and this great spirit and always coming And so I want you to look forward to that. from a place of great hope, you said. And then, Richard, I hope that in your comments tonight, you'll touch briefly on Proposition And I think that that's really the key. And I really want to, you know, form my comments, you know, around this and let it just kind 47, 47, when we're talking about restorative practices and investing in education in that of stay there, about coming from a place of great hope is an opportunity to work with way also. Thank you.
All right, Trustee Barnett. Okay, Trustee Barrera.
parents, teachers, principals, leadership throughout San Diego Unified with a great
Yeah, just very quickly on Prop 47. And I know Trustee Foster and I will be bringing a resolution in support of Prop 47
expectation of what we want for our schools.
to the board at our next meeting.
It's something in that which is building up as opposed to tearing down.
But I, if people have been looking at this measure, it's, I think it's the first measure
And I think that that's also what came from the comments of Bayview Baptist Church Pastor
that, in my memory, that's been a statewide ballot initiative to go right to the heart
Brooks in terms of working together and collaborating.
of this issue, that for well over a generation, Californians have reversed our priorities,
And so that is always my expectation, because I believe that we all want the best for our
where, you know, a generation, two generations ago, the commitment of our parents and our
children. And so coming from that place of great hope and expectations, that's how we get to what
grandparents was to create the finest public education system anywhere in the world.
we all, you know, want to happen. And another thing that I'm looking forward to in our presentations tonight is the Earth
And over the course of a generation, we've turned our backs on that commitment, and instead, we've created the most expensive incarceration system in the world.
Lab. You'll hear from, which is a great example of community, school, and businesses working
And what Prop 47, of course, on its own, is not going to solve that problem, but Prop 47 goes right to the heart of it and basically talks about disinvesting from being afraid of our kids and locking our kids up and taking the money that we save from not investing in incarceration and putting that money into prevention, including into our public school system. So, we'll discuss that more, obviously, when we bring a resolution together next month. But incredibly important for people to make themselves aware of this, of this measure on the ballot. I just wanted to also briefly mention that about a year ago, this board voted to approve a memorandum of agreement with the San Diego Education Association, which was to create a task force to develop a new pipeline of teachers for the future of our district. And the twin goals were to develop a pipeline that could identify and encourage gifted students in our schools today who have, you know, the inclination or the talent to become our teachers of tomorrow. How do we identify those students, support them, encourage them to get into the teaching profession? And the second goal is to make sure, as we move forward, that our teaching staff mirrors the diversity of our student body. And so what happened was, as a result of that MOU, we worked with SDEA to create a task force that has now worked for close to a year. And it's been teachers, it's been administrative staff, but it's also been community partners, it's been people from our university partners and others. And what we have now that will come to us next month is the report out from the work of that task force. And I think this board is going to be enthusiastic about, about what comes to us. Very, very comprehensive set of recommendations, both practical recommendations for things that we can do immediately. As we know, over the next three to five years, we're likely to hire thousands of teachers into this district. And it's an opportunity right now to make significant changes and to move our district forward. But also, long-term strategies, especially aimed at encouraging our own students to get into the teaching profession. So, last Thursday, Trustee Foster, Superintendent Martin, SDA President Lindsay Burningham and I attended the final meeting of the, of the working group of the task force. And now that report will be coming to us next month, and I'm very excited with the comprehensive set of recommendations that are going to be, you know. Also, we were well represented, our school district, at the Climate Action March on Sunday. President Beiser, Superintendent Martin, and a lot of teachers and parents and students from San Diego Unified were part of that, part of that march.
Great, thank you. I just have a couple of things real quick. I had a great time at the San Diego Unified Council PTA Meeting on Monday night, welcoming back all the PTA presidents and parents, students and staff at the Ballot Parent Center. Thrilled that we're implementing the Styrofoam Lunch Tray Ban in San Diego Unified this year, thanks to so many people on the staff and this board. And a special thanks also to the children at Grande Vista Elementary School in Tierra Santa, who did an extensive amount of research and data and presented to the Board of Education before we voted unanimously 5-0 to ban Styrofoam lunch trays in our school district. So, thank you, Phil Stover and Gary Patel and everybody, and purchasing and staff and Cindy Martin and Bill Koba and everybody that has heard me talk about this for quite some time. Midori Wong, and I could go on and on and on, but they're turning up the music on me.
And what type of tray is in your hand?
This is a compostable, biodegradable tray made out of organic fibers, and this will break down in a matter of days, as opposed to Styrofoam, which takes millions of years.
Right. I want to make sure people didn't think you were holding up a Styrofoam tray.
Oh, no, this is a...
This is the real thing.
No, yeah. And I've heard from some people that their grandchildren are sharing with them that they don't have Styrofoam lunch trays anymore. So, kids are loving it, too. Then the other thing, the other pleasant surprise, you know, being a teacher, I love, you know, when, when students do amazing and fantastic artwork and reading and writing. And I was like, "Well, what is this?" And so I looked at it, and it says, "Dear Mr. Beiser and the Board of Education, thank you for educating, for placing our school with air conditioning. It's been a big help to our class." That's just one student. Another student goes on, "P.S., I'm glad, I'm glad that there are people out there who actually care about the children." And that's from Hunter. Another student writes, "I would sweat every time when I went to my class, and sometimes it would be 99 degrees. And when people got sick, they would go to the nurse's office. Thank you for air conditioning, Mr. Beiser and the board." Another student writes, "In class, it is so much better now. Thank you. I can focus on my work and the directions. Before, I did not like school. Now, I love school. Thank you so much, Mr. Beiser and the whole school board for getting us air conditioning." So, I just want to thank Lee Dolgeroff, Phil Stover, all the staff and facilities, Superintendent, the voters who voted for Prop Zed Bond so we could take care of our children and provide them safer learning environments. And I also want to say a personal thank you to each and every board member here who helped make sure that this project went through in an expedited manner. We fast-tracked air conditioning. We installed air conditioning in so many classrooms over the summer, and it's going, it's going into many, many more. And after these 2,000 classrooms have air conditioning, then we'll look forward to other classrooms that are still incredibly hot for our kids. So, that's, that's just such a great note. And I think maybe we should put these up on the wall or somewhere out there in the lobby so other people can read them at their leisure. The website, yes. That concludes board information reports. Onto Student Instructional Matters. Item E1, Associated Student Body President's Report. He and my. Okay, Morgan Tucker, were you briefed on this segment of the board meeting? Oh, fantastic. Yes, please, share.
So, at our last president's council meeting, which is all the ASP presidents of San Diego Unified, we decided that October 30th was, we were all, all San Diego Unified high schools would wear the color purple in order to honor Anti-Bullying Month, and that date just worked out for most of us. So, yeah, you're wearing purple.
I got the "wear purple" memo, yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, October 30th is when we are going to do that.
Thank you.
Did you, did you elect a president of the ASP Council?
Unfortunately, we couldn't elect last council meeting because we didn't have enough representatives.
No quorum?
Yeah.
Do we need to like have pizza or something there to get more people to turn out to the meeting?
That'd be a good idea.
Okay. Thank you. Did you have anything else, Ken?
Also, at our last meeting, we were talking about, we were talking with you about forming more dialogues at school, and that sounded like something interesting that we wanted to talk about. And that's all. We just really discussed our ideas, and that was our first official meeting. So, we're still in the process of everything.
Good. Thank you so much for that report out. Now, onto item E2, the LCAP Vision 2020 Implementation Report, Safe and Well-Maintained Facilities, Physical Environments, and Social Environments. Superintendent Cindy Martin?
Thank you, President Beiser. We're going to load up a PowerPoint. And while that's getting loaded, I wanted to put this into context. As you know, last year, I gave monthly superintendents' reports around the instructional matters, around what we're doing to implement Vision 2020. And each month, I would focus on a different quality school indicator, talk about what we're seeing in the school, what the professional learning for all looked like, what the broad and challenging curriculum was looking like. We took each of the indicators and each month present a different report. What you'll see this year in my monthly reports, while I'll still do the monthly reports, what I'm doing is tying together our LCAP and our Vision 2020. Because as last year unfolded and we engaged in the community dialogue around the LCFF implementation with developing an LCAP, what we did is we aligned Vision 2020, 12 indicators, and the LCAP. So, it wasn't some new state initiative or state regulation that's going to come down and tell us something new to do. We actually wrote our LCAP in alignment with Vision 2020 and the 12 indicators. So, my monthly reports will now allow me to have the opportunity to share first in this forum with the five of you at this public meeting where we are in implementing our LCAP, which is an implementation of Vision 2020. So, you get to hear each month how we're doing. And a key feature of the LCAP is the A in the LCAP stands for Accountability. It's the Local Control Accountability Plan. That's a fundamental change that we are able to decide as a system, how do we want to hold ourselves accountable? The state allocates the money, and we make decisions around how we're going to hold ourselves accountable. And through the development of the LCAP, we identified our indicators, and we identified the metrics that we're going to use to show how are we doing with the funding and how we allocated it, what are the results. And so, it's beyond the old way of measuring our schools, which was the API and a CST score and a couple of other indicators. We have broader measures, which actually this board in 2009, Vision 2020, Vision 1, was broader measures for how our schools are doing. This is the realization of that. We now have in our LCAP over 30 measures to indicate how we're doing for every funding allocation, every decision that we've made for our dollars. And so, I want to, at each of these meetings, focus on one particular area with one particular metric. Some of the metrics that we identified are brand-new. We don't have any historical data, we don't have current data, but we will be developing the metric and the baseline data for those during this school year. So, some of the climate survey data, we don't have that yet, yet we've put it into our LCAP. So, tonight's presentation, I'll focus on the quality indicator number 12, which is Safe and Well-Maintained Facilities, and talk to you about what we're doing, what we're putting in place. Year one of the LCAP, it's important that we are clear on the actions and services that are being provided with the LCFF dollars. So, you're going to hear the actions and services being provided in year one of the LCAP, and you'll see the alignment to our Vision 2020 and our 12 indicators. I want to emphasize, this is the new conversation that we get to have in public education in San Diego. We're interested in being a leader around how do we talk about how our schools are doing? How are the physical, social, academic environments doing? The dollars that we've allocated and spent, what difference is that making in our schools? And how can we talk about the leadership moves that we're making, the services we're providing, the actions that we're taking to show that there's implementation with impact in our schools? And so what you hear in this presentation is the kickoff. And then from tonight's meeting, all of our stakeholder groups, whether we go to our cluster meetings, we will be presenting the same presentation that you hear tonight at our cluster meetings, at our advisory group meetings, where we have the people that helped us put the LCAP together. We want to be able to talk about how's it going every month, LCAP implementation in year one. So, I sort of kick it off at this meeting so the board hears and we hear in this public forum. But then people that don't come to a board meeting or can't make it to a board meeting or aren't watching it, that they come to community meetings, they come to cluster meetings, they're going to hear on a monthly basis, how are we doing and how, what's the implementation look like month by month in this first year of the LCAP? So, this is the first time we've done it in this way, but I want to, that I'm adding data to tonight's presentation. It's the beginning of the conversation around how we change the dialogue around how our schools are doing. So, like I said, the one that we're focusing on tonight is Indicator 12, Safe and Well-Maintained Facilities. So, first, let's look at the destination. Remember, for each of the 12 indicators, we wrote the destination. What's it going to look like in Vision 20, in 2020? What will it look like when Indicator number 12 is fully realized? It will look like all schools will be clean, safe, well-organized, and have a positive climate that supports the academic, emotional, and physical needs of students through appropriate supervision, positive behavior intervention and support, and customer service. We've committed to that destination, that definition from our 12 indicators over the last several years. This is not a new destination that's written for this report. This is what we've worked to build. As you see, our first learning cycle, being about social, physical, and academic environments, is definitely aligned to this destination. So, we're launching with that. And as we continue, the actions and services that we said, so if we're going to make that happen, what are the actions and services that we committed to in the LCAP year one to realize that vision? The ones in bold are the ones that we've already done so far. In year one, we're ensuring that schools are attractive, clean, and welcoming. I gave examples at my first board meeting, our first board meeting of this school year around the welcoming environments from our admin assistants going to a training and learning about how to have a welcoming front office. We're providing opportunities and supports for our middle school and our high schools to implement the restorative justice practices and PBIS. The district school, and these are directly from the LCAP, and then I'll go into detail. District and school staff are setting goals to decrease suspensions and expulsion rates, the discipline referrals, and the removal from classroom incidents to implement the positive alternatives. Again, that's restorative justice and PBIS. We're going to continue to work on assessing the impact of intense student behaviors and design differentiated systems of support for school staffs and students. That's not highlighted yet because that one, that fourth bullet, actually comes out in our third learning cycle. Our first learning cycle, we were able to implement those first three actions. The action that we committed to in the LCAP around paying attention to intense student behaviors. Our third learning cycle looks at differentiated support, and that's where we'll be addressing that action. And then the last one on this slide is to ensure school safety is a priority, led by school staff with support of police services, school safety plans, and they're updated annually. As you heard earlier tonight, you know that there's a comprehensive school safety assessment that's, that will be coming forward as that comes forward. We'll be implementing that LCAP action for services for year one. This is the focus of our work for the learning cycles. You know we're in learning cycle one right now, which I've talked a lot about. But the overall focus of the year is we asked ourselves the questions, how are we going to develop students who take an active stance in their own learning and become actively literate, contributing, participating members of society who make a positive difference in the world? That's the frame for the year. And the first learning cycle, as you know, is academic, social, physical environments worthy of our children. Second... We're providing opportunities and supports for our middle school and our high schools to implement the restorative justice practices and PBIS. The district school, these are directly from the LCAP, and then I'll go into detail. District and school staff are setting goals to decrease suspensions and expulsion rates, the discipline referrals, and the removal from classroom incidents to implement the positive alternatives. Again, that's restorative justice and PBIS. We're going to continue to work on assessing the impact of intense student behaviors and design differentiated systems of support for school staffs and students. That's not highlighted yet because that one, that fourth bullet, actually comes out in our third learning cycle. Our first learning cycle, we were able to implement those first three actions. The action that we committed to in the LCAP around paying attention to intense student behaviors. Our third learning cycle looks at differentiated support, and that's where we'll be addressing that action. And then the last one on this slide is to ensure school safety is a priority, led by school staff with support of police services, school safety plans, and they're updated annually. As you heard earlier tonight, you know that there's a comprehensive school safety assessment that will be coming forward as that comes forward. We'll be implementing that LCAP action for services for year 1. This is the focus of our work for the learning cycles. You know we're in learning cycle 1 right now, which I've talked a lot about. But the overall focus of the year is we asked ourselves the questions, how are we going to develop students who take an active stance in their own learning and become actively literate, contributing, participating members of society who make a positive difference in the world? That's the frame for the year. And the first learning cycle, as you know, is academic, social, physical environments worthy of our children. Second learning cycle is going to begin on November 13th, and that's where we focus on collaborative conversations. Collaborative conversations in the classroom that gets to the academic environment. How are we giving opportunities for students to talk, to be in dialogue with each other, and use this approach called collaborative conversations? Our third, when we walk into classrooms, we want to hear talk, alive with talk. Our third learning cycle begins in February, February 6th to April 15th. That's where we'll be looking at differentiation, and we're going to be studying the question, how do we create the learning conditions that maximize the potential that lies within the variability of all learners? That's a big fancy question that basically says we're looking at differentiation. How do we make sure we're supporting students who need to be extended, students who struggle? Do we have learning conditions that maximize the potential for all students? That gets into the third cycle. And then the fourth cycle is how do we develop students who take an active stance in their learning and the learning of others? I probably shouldn't have a favorite of these four learning cycles because they all, each one of these learning cycles inside them is embedded actions and services to accomplish the LCAP promises from this year. So each of these cycle, each of these learning cycle questions help us put the work into place. And I don't necessarily have a favorite, but I really love the fourth one because the fourth one gets to student voice. As important as all of them are, you know, student voice could be something that we do all the way throughout, and it is something we pay attention to, but then we take a particular focus in the fourth learning cycle, which definitely contributes to our climate and culture. But launching the year in a really powerful way, looking, when we looked at social, academic, and physical environments worthy of our children, that social environment piece is so important because the social environment is a place where student voice matters. So that's the focus of our learning cycles for the year. And we launched this year with, what does it mean to welcome? To welcome people into our buildings, onto our campuses, into our classrooms, into our departments, into our divisions, any interaction that anybody has with our organization, whether you're a student or an employee in our organization or a member of the public. We want to portray our intent and our belief around quality neighborhood schools and a community-based reform effort, that our schools are places where people feel well-cared-for, they feel listened to. And so this quote from Maya Angelou launched the year in our leadership development work, and in each of our schools, this is what we design our work from. We know that, what Maya Angelou's quote, "I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." So we look very carefully at how are we making one another feel? How are we treating each other with kindness? Are we being gentle with one another even when we're facing very significant challenges, very significant decisions that need to be made? How are we treating one another? How are we making each other feel? Whether it's a student who comes late to class every day, and when they walk in, what does that teacher say? "Where have you been?" Or "I'm so glad you're here." And our words matter. So we spent a lot of time talking about how our words matter and what welcoming environments mean all across our system. So in learning cycle 1, as you can see, the way we launched that is absolutely connected to the commitment we've made in the LCAP around creating our environments. We've asked the question in this cycle, how can we make our schools so welcoming, so inviting, so comfortable, that every single person who walks through our doors believes that they're about to have an amazing experience? We're asking ourselves that question in every school across our district because we believe in the quality of the work that we're providing, and what will it take to make sure that every environment feels welcoming in this way? So we do this work through our principal professional development. The principals are studying a book during this cycle, written by San Diego State professors Doug Fisher, Nancy Frye, and Ian Pumpeyan. The book is called How to Create a Culture of Achievement in Your School and Your Classroom. It's founded on five pillars: welcoming, doing no harm, using choice words that it's never too late to learn, and how do we create the best schools in the universe? And so we're studying that book, and some of the programs and services and actions that we're putting in place come from this book study that every principal is in with their area superintendent. This is a graphic that I used last year. We're using the same structure for professional learning this year. I created a structure for first, the area superintendents who report directly to me and the chief of staff. We work weekly with them in our instructional cabinet, and we're using that same learning structure. So what are the area superintendents learning? I'm designing a year's worth of learning for them. And so far, you can see the blue arrows to the right, because we've already been busy with our area superintendent learning, asking the questions about creating the culture of achievement in the schools, what's the area superintendent's role in leading that work? We already had our first calibration walkthrough at Burbank Elementary. And if you'll remember from last year, the calibration walkthrough was at La Jolla Elementary in the first week of school. This year, we had our calibration walkthrough at Burbank Elementary. That's bringing all the area superintendents together, so we have a common lens, a common language, a common vision. When we're walking through our schools, what are we looking for when we talk about quality instruction? We talk about the academic environment, the social environment, the physical environment. Are we calibrated? Do all of our area superintendents use the same lens? And we develop that lens, co-construct that together when we do the calibration walkthroughs. We've also been already on our walkthroughs, my weekly visits to schools. I've already been to Lincoln High School. These are for instructional walkthroughs. It's the bottom part of the triangle with the superintendent and chief of staff. We do this on a monthly basis, and we've already been to Lincoln High School, Encanto, Curie, Montgomery, Rodriguez, and eventually Weinberger, just in these first couple of weeks of school. That's the learning plan for the area superintendents. This is the learning plan for the principals. And what we've created is the same structure, that we have the monthly principals institutes. Then we have the half-day principal institute. Tomorrow, for example, will be an elementary half-day institute. We provide principal coaching groups, small group learning, individual coaching. We provide capacity-building learning cycles. There's six of them going on right now. These learning cycles in six of our schools involve the area superintendent, a mentor principal, and the common core cluster support teachers. We provide principal triad studies. Cycle 1 triad is beginning with the first half-day institute tomorrow. And then we have area superintendents and principals going on walkthroughs, and our area superintendents are averaging six to eight walkthroughs per week. And some of our area superintendents are especially, a couple of our new ones. I know Dr. Freire is, one of her intentions is, when she walks through a school, since she's new, is to go into every single classroom. So I heard from her last week, when she went to Patrick Henry High School, she went to all 71 classrooms in one day to just make sure she's getting a look into each classroom. But the walkthroughs are structured in a way that we co-plan and we create what we're looking for when we do our school walkthroughs. I spoke at the last board meeting about our school office professional development. These are the admin assistants for the area, someone's clapping for their friends there? The admin assistants for the area superintendents put together a beautiful professional development for the elementary school, or not just the elementary, the admin assistants at elementary, middle school, and high school that focused on how to create a culture of achievement in your school and classroom, and what was the front office staff's role. They created a plan for their welcoming front offices. This is, these are some pictures from the admins co-constructing their learning. They were role-playing. They were presenting new learning to each other, and they were figuring out how to best support this learning cycle and the actions from the LCAP around the welcoming environments that we want. One of our focus areas is when we ask the question, developing physical environments worthy of our children. We know that our physical environment shows what we value and what we believe our communities deserve. One of the quotes we've used is at the outside says a lot about the inside. So what does this look like? We looked at our physical environments at schools. We saw beautiful mosaics. This is over here at Bernie, and the other one is over at McKinley. Our school gardens, the physical environments, there aren't enough pictures. It could be a slideshow of 400 pictures of what we've seen in terms of how gorgeous our schools look in the physical environments. We're committed to creating the safe, attractive, and well-maintained schools. So what actions and services did we provide in order to make this happen? We started a project on June 16th to make sure we were ready for the first day of school in September. We didn't just say, "We want clean, safe, well-maintained environments," and we put it in our LCAP. What actions did we put in place? So we had Dr. Jeannie Steeg, one of our retired administrators, work side-by-side with the PPO team, and the zone managers, the safety, the landscape custodial, and maintenance supervisors to review the exterior cleanliness of our schools, the maintenance, the landscape of all of our high schools, middle schools, and some selected elementary schools, working with our area superintendents to say which schools need some spot checks. Are we delivering on our promise here? We're going to make a promise, we're going to make a commitment, but what services are we going to put in place? So with the work that Jeannie led, starting in June, over that four-to-five-week period, we developed the priorities, what was immediate, what needed to be done right away to make sure our schools were ready, show-ready for day one, what was the long-range action plan for facilities needs, and we did this at 63 sites. We created action plans that consisted of the issues and the concerns that we noticed on the site visits that we conducted, that Dr. Steeg conducted. And then we had an assessment of progress and updates throughout the entire process so that we understood if we reached our goal of completing it by the first day of school to add to the clean, safe, attractive, well-maintained environment. So that was something that we put in place to start the year. And during that, then we looked at the social, so that's physical. Then we looked at our social environment. As we got into the classrooms, we began to see examples of scholarly behavior being led at schools. We heard teachers with morning meetings, you know, how do we welcome students into our classroom? The language of hello, the language of goodbye, how do we have eye contact during body control? This is a picture from one of our schools, where this said, "Be a scholar," where you have eye contact and body control versus you're distracted and wiggly and not this. And do you have a social environment that leads to an academic environment that we support? We also, for the social environment, invested, as you know, in restorative justice and PBIS. How will we deliver on the social part of this destination? It's through our viable alternatives to suspension. We already passed a board action on the July 29th board meeting, I believe, to expand. We changed our discipline policies. We changed our suspension policies. Now we're putting into place the alternatives for suspensions and expulsions using those positive behavior intervention strategies. We're focused on strengthening relationships, school climate, student voice and accountability, and the environment and culture. And we've examined our district, we examined the zero tolerance policy. We made the significant changes already, and the training started in September. So our site administrators understand that board action happened in July. Now what does this look like in our schools as we begin to implement that? And restorative justice begins to take hold in our high schools so that we're focused on building relationships, strengthening our learning communities. We know that it's all about the relationships and the climate and culture at the school. So actions and services already in place is in spring 2014, the middle schools and high schools already participated in two days of professional development. At that point, it was optional. Summer and September 2014, we added additional PD to provide the identified middle and high school teams. Our focus this year is on the restorative conferences and the restorative circles so that we can reduce suspension and expulsions. And we know that we have some sites that are participating in the expanded work this year, Madison, CPMA, Innovation, San Diego High, Hoover, Wilson, Crawford, and Henry. And we have a more expansive list of what's year 1, what's year 2, what's year 3, and how we're implementing and rolling out. And we heard public comment earlier about, can we just do it all right now? Why do we have to wait? But we do have a structured plan that will be provided to you as well as follow-up to this meeting. PBIS is continuing. That's that evidence-based research system, how are we going to improve our student behavior, school climate, positive behavior intervention. So we started, this work is not new, in 2008. PBIS was in place already in 80 of our schools. The focus for 1415, as we move forward to reach this destination for this indicator, we're going to complete the professional development for K-8 and middle sites, six days. We're going to add a new elementary cohort, six days for elementary, the cohort that's going to be participating in that. And then we also saw that in the first year of implementation, the schools that have already implemented, there's been a change. If they started in 2008, that's old news. And so we did put together some, we're calling them refresh practices, a two-day for the sites who've already had this in place, to look at their current practices. We know you were trained in 2008, how's it going? So we'll refresh with a two-day. Some of the sites, this isn't a comprehensive list, as I mentioned, we'll provide to you in a separate memo, all of the sites and what the rollout plan is. But EB Scripps, Porter, Bethune, Challenger, Innovation, Lafayette &amp; Diggman are some of them that we know we're currently working with. So what are the next steps as we implement and try to reach this destination? And then what are the metrics that go with it? Our area superintendents are working with the principals. Principals are creating what we call the principal leadership plan. The principal leadership plan is focusing on their physical environment, social environment, and academic environment. Those are being created right now with the area superintendents, how they plan to lead this work. The principals are part of a half-day conference that's going on this week, focused on observing instruction. We're working on refining and developing the instructional eyes, so principals, when they go in classrooms, they know what they're looking for. And we're naming the teaching behaviors that we know matter, and looking through the lens of academic, social, physical. When a principal walks in a room, what are you looking at? You're looking at the bulletin boards, you're looking at the students, you're listening to the conversation. We're looking through those lenses, and principals are working with area superintendents on that. We're taking action to implement this, updated suspension, expulsion policies. Those were the admin procedures that you took action on in July. As those are being implemented, we have to put in place the student discipline placement, restorative justice practices, PBIS training for the principals, and counselors and resource teachers so we can do full implementation. We're finalizing currently our Safe and Civil Schools Agreement, and we're going to present that to the board for approval. That's the agreement with PBIS to expand that. And we are going to begin the refresh practices, and we'll be scheduling our new PBIS cohorts at the middle schools and elementary schools. Is this data, can we put this slide up too? So that's where we are in implementing our quality indicator number 12. And what I said at the beginning, as we have the conversation around data, what data goes with this? So all of this sounds great, all this learning that's happening, but what actually goes on when we implement? So one of the indicators, one of the LCAP metrics that we already have data on, like I said, some of the metrics we don't have yet, they'll be baseline, but one that we can look at tied to, how are we doing on developing the social environments worthy of our children? If you go to the destination that I first read, schools are clean, safe, well-organized, and have a positive climate. How do we know? How are we going to measure ourselves on that? And through the LCAP process, last year, we identified what indicators we're going to use. A key indicator developed by our community, named by the community, written into the LCAP, was our suspension and expulsion data. That data is a key indicator. It's not the only indicator, but it's an important key indicator of what we've put in the destination about positive climate, social, emotional work that's going on at the school, and that there's appropriate supervision with positive behavior intervention and support. We think suspension data is very telling. So this is an example of how we will look at data, and this will be shared at each of the cluster meetings as we roll it out after I present things, data here, so we get a conversation going around what are we monitoring throughout this year. So what I have here is currently our suspension data by subgroup and our expulsion data by subgroup, as we believe is an indicator saying how we're doing. I'd like this to be set up for us. This is a dialogue. This isn't a, there's this concept of data is an end of the story. You do it at the end of the year, and you talk about it. This is a process where we're going to be looking at data throughout the year and figuring out, are our actions actually taking hold and what's happening? Is this, tonight, we're reviewing data. The difference between reviewable data and actionable data. The whole point of the LCAP is that we review data regularly. We don't just wait till the end of the year, after the kids are gone, and have an autopsy and see how the year went. We review data on an ongoing basis, and we have a dialogue here. And it's not, a lot of, when you get into the mode of using data as a dialogue, you have a different conversation because data actually sometimes creates more questions than answers. So this isn't meant to say it's solved. This isn't meant to say, here are the answers. This is meant to say, how are we doing and what are we doing next? And so the way we put the data together now, you can see that we're looking at our suspension rate for 1213 and 1314. And the suspension rate, we're seeing a decrease. We look at, the standard way of reporting data, reporting suspension data by the state, just so you know, is suspension rate is defined as a number of suspensions per 100 students. In our LCAP, we made a commitment to reduce our suspension rates, and the suspension rate is defined by the state. When you look up CDE, you look up our suspension rates, it's defined in that way. So in our LCAP, we're defining it the same way. So you can see, one of the things I think that stands out here is in our 1213 data compared to 1314 data of male students. In the whole district, 51% of our students are male. That's of total enrollment. But there's a disproportionate number of students that are, of males, so 51% are male, but 76.7% were suspended, a 78% in 1314. So you can look at the top, and you can say, okay, so suspension rate's gone down. Even though our suspension rate is lower, there's fewer suspensions, but the proportionality proportionality got higher. So what does that tell us? And that's a conversation we get to now have as a community as we monitor, we review this data, we have a dialogue about it. Because everything that I just put in the report around the actions that we're taking to make an impact, this data is going to show us over time. We continue to monitor this. We lift it up and say, this is what we're paying attention to. Over time, we'll know, are these actions that we're putting in place and services that we've committed to, and we have real dollars, real actions, real services, should move the dial on these indicators? But getting us used to a different indicator, not just CST anymore, what are the other indicators that we're looking for? This is an example. So how we're putting the data together, you can see, for example, our African-American students comprise 9% of district enrollment, and yet the suspension rates are 23.4% and 22.3%. You can look at our Hispanic population comprised of 45% of our district, and there's a disproportionate amount. Now, the disproportion is not as great for Hispanic students as it is for African-American. The difference between percent enrollment and percent suspended is not as great for our Hispanic students compared to our African-Americans. So this data, we believe, in our district-managed schools, these are a very key climate indicator. And if we keep paying attention to this climate indicator and we keep putting in these supports, we should begin to see this disproportionality change and begin to have this conversation of continuous improvement as we monitor that. The next one is our expulsion data, and you'll see similar, oh, she has to put it up for me. The expulsion data, again, we're looking at, we did see the total number of expulsions go down from 174 to 107. We have it broken down by gender and by ethnicity. And then you can see, again, the males and the disproportionality. The same thing with our African-American and Hispanic, where there's a disproportionality in expulsion data. So what you're seeing here is, how are we going to begin to talk about data and use data to tie it to our LCAP metrics? And that this is a conversation that doesn't just happen at the end of the year, put out the report, put it in the paper, and then say, okay, these are the schools that are working and not. This has to be an ongoing dialogue. And so first time we're putting the report together, you'll see that month by month, they'll be adding more data. So people know when we're talking about a quality neighborhood school, the broader measures that you committed to in 2009, they're here now. And this is our first attempt to put this data out here and have this conversation to say, so you said in the LCAP, you are going to make a difference on making sure that all schools are clean, safe, well-organized, and have positive climate that supports academic, blah, blah. We put that in the LCAP, how are you going to know? We put the metrics in the LCAP, this is how we're going to know? This is what we're going to monitor, and we want to make this a conversation with our community. So you'll see that I continue to do on a monthly basis, the updates, and then the updates go out to our stakeholder groups month by month throughout the year. Like I said, it's a beginning conversation. We see this as a dialogue. There are not answers to the big questions that will come from this, but the questions begin here, and then the solution gets created through the process of implementation throughout the year. So there we go with our beginning of the LCAP and student instructional matters through San Diego Unified as we launch our year one of the LCAP aligned to our LCFF and our Vision 2020 with our indicators.
Superintendent, I really like the way that the data is broken down. It's very, very clear. And, you know, you would be able to see the kind of trend data that we're looking for. And what I would hope is that we would also break this down by school sites so the school site councils, SGTs, you can look at this data as well and just know how their schools are doing and, you know, contribute to improving this.
Great. We do have a public speaker on this item, Tina Merchant. All right. Okay. Any other board member comments or questions on this information item? Trustee Evans?
This is a great presentation, really good information in tying together Vision 2020 and the LCAP. I just had one thought about presentations. In the future, I'm looking at, you know, the school office, professional staff, and all of them working together from across the district and really getting excited and role-playing and so forth. This kind of being there and seeing is believing and getting involved. And one of the key teams that you're working with is the team of our area superintendents. And I know that, you know, coming to board meetings isn't necessarily the most popular thing for staff, but I think it'd be really helpful for the board and for the public to actually meet the area superintendents and get some, because one of the things I know in talking with you is that we each know different area superintendents. We know the good work that they're doing. But what I think what's happening now is that the whole is greater than the sum of its parts, and that you really have this team, not just you've got this part of town, you've got that part of town, but they're really working together. And I think we have a couple of new area superintendents. We have area superintendents who have moved to different clusters and locations. And just to sort of, in real life, visually see, just with some sort of, whatever is the topic, some sort of brief presentation, I think it would really help the public to understand what important role they have. I mean, some people could look at them as, at being a certain bureaucratic level. Other people could look at them as supervisors of people. But their role is really to go into the schools, figure out what kind of help people need, and really support the principals and the teachers and the support staff and doing all of their job. And, you know, it's a huge district. They've got a big job. And I just think it would, I think it would make it more real to us, the really great work that they're doing.
So part of the implementation of this is the area superintendent's role in this is critical. And the way we structured it is, yes, I will first present here, but then this presentation that I've just provided now is provided to our leaders, our area superintendents. So when they're presenting at cluster meetings, the clusters hear the same conversation. They hear the same implementation. They hear the data points so that they know what we're looking at, what we're tracking, what we're monitoring. And although you don't see every area superintendent in the audience right now, it is actually a requirement this year that area superintendents, I'll say hi to you all right now, that they are watching the board meeting. They're required to watch the board meetings even if they're not here. Sometimes they're out at cluster meetings, they're out at other events, so they're not, it's not necessary that they, in fact, we made that requirement last week, or the first board meeting, and then the television didn't work. So the only thing it could do is listen to the audio. But we're back on TV now and the area superintendents watching this dialogue so they can hear. How do we launch this conversation here at this meeting so they can hear the dialogue with the five of you, with our community? And then they lead that out in the community. And this is really designed to create coherence across the whole system. We have one LCAP. We don't have LCAPs from each different principal in each different school. This is the board's intention to use the LCFF money in a focused way to make an impact. And the LCAP is our way of doing it. And if we are not all on the same page, what we're doing, why we're doing it, how we're doing it, where the dollars are going, and what the impact is, then we create a diffuse and confusing system for everybody. So I appreciate that you make that comment. We're putting great intentionality around the area superintendent's role of leading it now out in the six areas.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you Superintendent Martin. Onto item E3, the EarthLab partnership with Groundwork San Diego, Choyas Creek, to provide outdoor science lab on portion of Millennial Tech Middle School. Mr. Dolgarauf, Ms. Wilson, Daryl Williams.
I think Trustee Foster is creating a drumroll.
There's a bunch of names here. This is a motion. This is an action item this evening. We do have a couple of speakers on it to follow the staff. Do we want all the staff? Oh, I see. There's a speaker. That's, that's great. Can we see the thing?
Put it sideways.
We typically have staff.
Okay, perfect. Great. Great. Thank you.
This is an interesting dilemma because we typically have staff come up here to present, but staff is working so closely with our community partners on this. So Mr. Dolgarauf and Dr. Wilson and Mr. Neal, our staff members are just right together with our community members. So we'll just have you all stand, be at the microphone to present instead of up here like you usually are. But we appreciate the work that's gone into tonight's item.
Thank you. Thank you Superintendent Martin, President Beiser, members of the board. Tonight, we will highlight our partnership with Groundwork EarthLab at Millennial Tech and ask the board to consider approval of the facilities license agreement. We've got a presentation here to illustrate the great education partnership that's the integrated support for STEAM and Common Core science in the Lincoln Cluster. And I'd like to introduce the members of our team. Mr. Daryl Williams is the president of Groundwork San Diego. Dr. Bud Mian, professor, emeritus of sociology and director of the Center for Research on Educational Equity, Access, and Teaching Excellence.
And also my master's thesis advisor at UCSD.
At UCSD. And he's written a lot of great books, too. I was looking, he's got a really long resume. Just shortened it up for this. Dr. Shirley Wilson, area superintendent. Willie Neal, principal at Millennial Tech. Nashia Ross, a Lincoln alumnus. And I'd also like to especially thank our general counsel, Andre Donovan, for her work on the facilities license agreement. This was an arduous undertaking. You're welcome. So, you know, I was getting ready, just going to introduce the team and go through the presentation, but when we were running through this, the team said, hey, this partnership is really embodied in the master plan for the campus at Millennial Tech. And so they said, Lee, I want you, we want you to show off the master plan. This master plan to modernize and renovate Millennial Tech and provide a better connection to EarthLab was developed during a series of community meetings that we conducted at Millennial Tech. Gosh, I want to go over to the board and point out things, but I guess I'll just do it from here. The new three-story building that you see is under construction right now.
Oh, look, she's helping you.
Oh, thank you. This new three-story building is under construction. It's four science labs, 12 general-purpose classrooms. This is really the anchor of the beginning of rebuilding all of Millennial Tech. This is one of, I think, one of Scott's favorite things. It's renovation by replacement. And this campus plan includes a new media center, food court, two-story classroom buildings, a multipurpose building, a new admin building. And if you look at how this is configured, one of the challenges that we originally had was, it was very difficult for students to access the Groundwork EarthLab space on the campus from the Millennial Tech campus because of the changes in topography. And so you see a lot of second-story circulation space, and this is something the task force really wanted to provide a great connection. And so that second-floor connection space through the elevated physical education space actually connects you right into the EarthLab. And you see this beautiful passeo that allows you to go, you know, which is an accessible path of travel that will, that actually connects you through the entire EarthLab. And you can see the EarthLab contains areas for energy education, repair and education, agricultural garden, a community garden. The team's going to talk a little bit more about this later. But it also gives us a safe route to school through the EarthLab from Euclid. So with that, I want to, I want to turn it over to the team, and we'll roll the presentation. Daryl, take it away.
Oh, you're going to roll the presentation first?
Or the video.
The video.
We're going to see a short video here.
Second and third graders at the EarthLab in Encanto meet twice a week to learn about earth restoration. It's all linked to the science and literacy they're learning in the classroom. Leslie Reynolds, who runs EarthLab, says, preserving a spot like this in a park-deficient neighborhood is unheard of.
We intend to turn this into a learning lab that's not only going to teach the children stewardship, but is going to improve their academic achievements markedly.
Research shows by the end of fifth grade, low-income kids are three years behind their upper-income peers, simply because they stopped learning during the summer months. Gina Gianzero is with one of the nine partner organizations supporting the Summer Readers Future Leaders Program.
And so we want to create the opportunities for these kids in these communities to have the same growth opportunities.
Marty Foster is a board trustee for San Diego Unified. She says, this brings the state Common Core standards to life.
Really what we're talking about now is collaboration and collective impact. And that's what the EarthLab does for not only children, but to their families. It opens it up for the community and helps them to learn about the world that they live in and sustaining it.
Perhaps inspiring the next scientists, all at the same time. Dwayne Brown, KPBS News.
I hope you enjoyed that as much as we did putting it together. My name's Daryl Williams, and I'm the president of Groundwork Choyas Creek. A little intro and background. Groundwork San Diego is the watershed manager for the Choyas Creek Watershed, leading the city of San Diego Choyas Creek Enhancement Program. We actually represent 32 square miles of creeks and rivers that we're going to be working on. Since 2007, Groundwork San Diego has worked with San Diego Unified School District and MTM to transfer, transform the underutilized parcel, now known as the EarthLab, into a fully functional outdoor learning lab and a center for academic and community watershed education and urban agriculture. Groundwork has generated over $300,000 in funding in support of the EarthLab activities over this time period. The EarthLab currently serves more than 1,000 third-grade through 12th-grade Lincoln Cluster students per year. The slide. Okay, there we go. Groundwork is here today to seek a 40-year license agreement and a district commitment to a short-term EarthLab capital improvements. Groundwork's goal is to continue to engage strategic partners and raise funds in support of a seven-day workweek center serving educators, students, and families, District E, and ultimately the region. On behalf of my community and Groundwork, we'd like to, we want to thank Trustee Foster for her remarkable leadership in helping us get into this point. Thank you. Now other team members will come forward.
Joy, excitement, rigorous instruction, hands-on learning. You saw a taste of that in the last two-minute clip that PBS put together on the EarthLab. And that's what Groundwork and EarthLab is all about. A joy for learning, an excitement about STEM-related activities, an attempt to gain equal access for men and women, girls and boys, students from different ethnic locations to become successful in STEM fields, which by the way, was the focus of a very large meeting today in the convention center. And I'm from UCSD, and I'm very pleased to say that UCSD is a very grateful partner and a helpful partner, hopefully, in this enterprise. And we envision the EarthLab as a place where the community interests and the university interests can come together and working on shared goals. And the shared goal here is to enhance this plot of land into a community asset that can be a dynamic place for hands-on learning, especially the kind of learning that extends classroom instruction during the academic year and can be utilized, as we've done for the past two summers, as a place where students to come and enhance their literacy skills, their observational skills, and their scientific skills. Let me give you an example of some of the work that's being done there. And the work that is being done is enabled by a number of industrial partners who are donating in many cases, tangible resources that can be held, can be used at the EarthLab, including solar panels, turbine generators, wind generators, potentially an algae pond that will be on the plot of the EarthLab. Each of these will involve and enable learning from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. The idea is that the same place can be used by students of different ages, but in a different way. Let me use one example, the development of the garden that was just mentioned. Imagine that elementary school students coming to the EarthLab would participate in experiments and demonstrations that have been well-established in the field. But they would get the joy and excitement of working with their hands, getting them dirty, enjoying the outdoors, and connecting that back to their elementary school classroom. And in every one of these cases, we are intending to be consistent with the Common Core standards, the next-generation science standards, and the district standards. So at the middle school level, the Common Core and next-generation standards expect that students will be engaged in observation, reporting on their observations, engaging in actual experiments where they see differences in possibilities. So again, back to the garden example. Students there from middle school would be Students there from middle school would be encouraged to actually design parts of their own experiments so that they could get the joy and the feel of engaging in that hands-on work that is connected back to their coursework. The principle here can be talked about, the gradual release of responsibility for instruction. The idea is that as students gain control over material and mature age-wise, teachers will release the responsibility for their learning from a directed instruction to a more collaborative, engaged activity. And this will really take hold at the senior level. So students at the high school level will be encouraged to design and build their own kinds of experiments. So again, at the garden, they could be engaged in modifying plots of land, engaging in different fertilizer encounters, different watering activities that they themselves build. They design it, and they build it. They may have to take it down at the end in order for another group to come in. But the principle there is one of using the same place, the same activity, but giving students more and more responsibility for their learning as they go through. This is, the university can contribute to this activity. We are able to organize the instructions such that our undergraduate students and our graduate students can, do come to the Earth Lab. There were pictures of them flashing by on the KPBS tape there. They can serve as tutors and mentors. In fact, if I could have the next slide, there's, yeah, down the left side, you see a representation of this idea of the vertical integration of learning, where elementary schools are interconnected to middle school and high schools, and the university students also are brought in to connect to them, both as tutors in the academic sense, but serving as mentors to explain to the youngsters what it's like when they go to college. We also bring university experts in the sciences, in the STEM fields. We also bring educational experts and some advice on evaluation and research. And so we think from the university that this is a mutually beneficial operation, because the university, frankly, is gaining quite a bit by having the opportunity to interact with the students in the neighborhood and the faculty in the neighborhood and the parents in the neighborhood. Well, at the same time, by bringing the resources from the university to the community, there's a benefit to Groundwork, to Earth Lab, to the students, and to the wider community. I was really pleased last summer when we had the early readers' activity, and one day a student was leaving and said, this place is better than SeaWorld, and I didn't even know it was here. And a lot of people don't know it's there. But Groundwork is working desperately to make sure that this community access is better-known, better-resourced, and available to the broader community. So we really urge your support in any way and all ways that you can, because this is a really beneficial activity, and the university is proud to be a part of that. Thank you for your attention.
Good evening to the Board of Education Superintendent Martin and distinguished guests. My name is Willie Neal, and I gladly serve as the principal at Millennial Tech Middle School, and it's an honor to serve our children, our parents, and community. MTM has had the opportunity to work closely with Groundwork San Diego team to provide an authentic outdoor learning experience for our school community, an experience that will extend beyond the walls of the classroom and provide our students with real-life experiences that would support our various curriculums and increase student achievement. Moreover, provide a platform for our students to experience outdoor learning through the Common Core State Standards and the next-generation science standards. I could sit up here and speak for a long time regarding how this partnership has impacted our school, but for the purposes of this presentation, I'll remain brief. Groundwork San Diego has provided professional development to our teachers in English, social science, math, as well as science, to collaborate and foster a learning environment outside of the classroom. Birthed from this collaboration were authentic learning experiences at the Earth Lab, using formal classroom instruction that enhanced student awareness of our ecosystem and our responsibility to help it thrive. As a result, our students began a garden club where they created their own composting and began planting local foods and plants. They also provide our students and staff with tools by which to explore the full spectrum of our STEAM program, using teacher professional development and planning to produce real-life and hands-on learning. Initially, this was reserved for our Conservation Science class and our Gateway Technology class, also known as GTT, because they were our cornerstone courses. But it has extended to our English classrooms, our math classrooms, our science classrooms, as well as our social studies classroom. So for example, last year, our 8th-grade ELA teachers utilized the Earth Lab as part of their poetry unit, and they directed the students to go up to the Earth Lab and listen for sounds of nature for Anamontopia to enhance their poetry writing. The students enjoyed this learning experience so much, they decided as a culminating activity that they were gonna paint a mural on our campus and call it "Ode to the Earth Lab." The Earth Lab hasn't just supported MTM students, but also our feeder schools, like Johnson Elementary School, Webster Elementary, Choyas Mead Elementary, Horton Elementary, as well as Lincoln High School, by providing its yearly and summer programming in collaboration with our teachers, thus providing a vertical alignment of the curriculum from K to 12. It has also empowered our students, our parents, and community to take advantage of the Earth Lab to enhance their own learning. They work tirelessly at getting the support from our parents and community to ensure that our students are present and have the best learning experience while in the Earth Lab. There are but a few of many, and these are but a few of the many initiatives Groundwork has provided in collaboration with Millennial Tech Middle School, as well as our feeder schools. So I'm excited about continuing this work with Groundwork as we work together to produce a learning environment that is worthy of our students. That said, MTM and Groundwork San Diego still has work to do to bring our mutual vision of producing a 21st-century lab space that will provide our students with state-of-the-art, with a state-of-the-art learning facility to help them navigate Common Core State Standards as well as the next-generation science standards, and give them a learning experience that is second to none. I appreciate and I thank you very much for your support.
Good evening. Shirley Wilson, Area One Superintendent. The Groundwork Earth Lab is a highly-vещered treasure in Lincoln Cluster. At MTM, the Earth Lab builds on the continuity between 6th, 7th, and 8th grade classes and supports Lincoln High School's STEAM focus. There are three feeder schools, Webster, Choyas Mead, and Horton, that participate in the exciting hands-on science education at the Earth Lab. The Earth Lab provides the students the opportunity to learn about science in a real, natural learning environment. The Groundwork High School Green Team is comprised largely of Lincoln High School students who work with students from the elementary feeder schools during the summer, serving as mentors, increasing their own science knowledge and reinforcing their own leadership. As an added feature, UCSD engineering students work with MTM and Lincoln High School students as well. Additionally, it's important to acknowledge the deep Groundwork Summer Learners Future Leaders Institute that just completed year two, where the evaluation of the scientific literacy indicates that the Earth Lab has a promise to be a model for all elementary schools in Lincoln Cluster. I want to emphasize that the Earth Lab is an asset and greatly contributes to the science education of the students in the Lincoln Cluster. Thank you so much.
Good evening. I'm Natna Shaya Ross. However, I want to say a few words about her. I'm Patrice Baker, the Community Outreach Director for Groundwork San Diego. And Shaya Ross is one of our stellar Green Team leadership members. In fact, she's spoken on behalf of the Choyas Creek and Groundwork throughout the country. She's gone to represent us with, at our Groundwork USA, and been on various panels. And she's also just received the four-year Chancellor Scholarship at UCSD. So she's a proud example of what can happen when you link the student with the earth, with the community, with the environment, with all of the things in far as education that we have to offer, the full picture. I, like I said, am Patrice Baker, and I grew up in this community. My family came here years ago, 1956, and that's where we met Reverend George Walker Smith and his family, then met the King family and the Matthews and all of that. And that community of folks, that's how I grew up. And I grew up knowing that I was supported from all arenas, whether I was out in the neighborhood, or I was at my school, or at my church. And coming onboard with Groundwork has enthused something in me, because it's given me hope. It's given me an understanding that we're taking care of our legacy. And our legacy, if we don't support it, we know what can happen when it goes neglected, when it's underserved, when we call it things that, you know, refer to it as a drainage ditch along Choyas Creek, but not seeing the beauty and the value. The same thing's happened with our young people. If we just look at statistics and what we, you know, the troublesome part of things, yeah, we get discouraged, but when we look at what the possibilities are, what's available, and we allow them to imagine the possibility so they can come up with the answers to solve these problems, from climate change to environment to feeding our people, to being able to take care and clothe everyone here and make it the great country that it is today. We've got to stimulate these minds. And the Earth Lab, I'm just, it's a gem, as you all know. All of you have been there, you know it's an easy sell. Once you come on the site and see the possibility, it infuses within you and all of us, the idea is that, wow, we've got something great here. We've got collaboration of all the partners to make it better, and we appreciate your time and look for your support in all that you can do in helping us give our kids the opportunities they need and deserve.
Good evening. My name is Pedro Villagas with San Diego Gas and Electric. I'm the Director of Community Relations, President Beiser, Superintendent Martin, distinguished members of the board. Thank you for having us, and student representatives as well. I want to start out a little bit by telling you who your utility is, because once I tell you that, it will become abundantly clear why we love this project and why I'm here representing the 4,400 men and women that work at STGNE every day to provide you power and why they love this project too. Your utility is a utility that in November will be producing 33% of your power from renewable sources, six years ahead of the state's deadline for getting to 33%. Your utility is a utility that's bringing you your power with 0% coal. And you can put that up against other utilities in the rest of the state, and you can put that up against other utilities in the rest of this nation, and that's a pretty significant achievement in and of itself. Your utility is a utility that is fully committed to energy efficiency, and we are very proud of the partnership that we have with our customers to achieve energy efficiency. We are very proud of our partnership with this school district in particular, to make sure that we're working together to do everything we can to save you energy and save you money, because on that mission statement up on the wall, it says nothing about paying STGNE's bills. We would like very much to continue that tradition of working with you to save you energy, save you money, and allow you to use those resources to accomplish your mission. We're a utility that is trying to build about over 5,000 charging stations and multifamily housing for electric vehicles throughout the service territory. And in particular, we want to do that because we think that folks that live in communities like Southeast San Diego, City Heights, other communities that are very heavy in multifamily housing, they should have access to electric vehicles too. There should not be an electric vehicle divide. And so we are very bullish in trying to make sure that folks have access to electric vehicles. We're a utility that this year will be reinvesting $6.5 million of our earnings into over 600 nonprofits in the communities that you serve as well. And we make that investment in nonprofits to serve 70% of the community that is underrepresented, that communities of color, that are low-income. That's our, that's our goal, 70%. We've met it for a number of years, we will continue to meet it as well, to meet the needs, the communities that most need, need to provide resources to help do that. And we do it to provide STEM education, after-school mostly, to provide environmental education, environmental community engagement. So in communities like the Choyas Creek community, folks turn towards the creek, and they take care of it, and we create another generation of environmental stewards that will take care of it for years and years on, and also use it as a tool to teach our kids. So that's what our company does, to provide you power. But it's more important, I think, to kind of view everything that we do as a teaching moment. And on many occasions, we open our doors to the community to come in and see the engineers and the financiers and the strategic planners and even the political scientists and the economists, to learn what we do, to help teachers see what we're doing in real time so that they can take that back into the classroom even and help get our kids prepared to be that next generation of STEM leaders and environmental stewards. And I have to tell you that this project is a really important part of that commitment that we have with the community in Southeast San Diego. In particular, it institutionalizes those teaching moments that we have every day in our, in our company. It institutionalizes a great teaching moment for STEM and environmental education that is just right there, next to the school, in a community that has amazing, amazing human capital, amazing diversity, and really, this, this project gives you the ability to make sure that that type of education persists for generations to come. So, you know, we had 100 volunteers out in Choyas Creek last Saturday for Coastal Cleanup Day. That's just another example of the type of commitment that we have there. And we look forward to having a facility where we can support the programs that are grafted on, onto that facility, to help make sure that companies like ours, the military, small businesses, churches, everyone in our community has the type of leaders in the future that can really make our community strong for many generations to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We also have a public speaker, Assemblymember Shirley Weber. Is there a representative from Assemblymember Weber's office in support? Okay, all right, great. Thank you very much for that informative presentation. We do have a, this is an action item. Is there a motion?
I made a motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, please vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody, staff and community partners alike. All right, do I have a motion on the board consent agenda? Is there a second? Okay, please vote. Please vote again. That passes unanimously. Item G1, ratification of tentative agreement with parent educators par bargaining unit.
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Please vote.
There was a speaker on that.
Oh, I apologize. I don't have a speaker on, a speaker slip or a speaker on my blue slip.
Just make your best.
All right, thank you. Sabrina Henlon.
Good evening, Board, President Beiser and Cindy Martin. I'm here to, obviously, you guys are gonna support this, because you're all ready to do it, but I'm grateful for, my members are grateful for a continuing assurance of health and welfare benefits to remain for the remainder of this contract through 2016. I do want to emphasize, we're a little disappointed that there was no wage increase, but we understand that we're trying to move forward and create a less of a deficit in our budget. But with that in mind, keep in mind that we, as parent educators, are looking for professional development. I speak to it at almost every meeting I attend. I am looking, hopefully, for support from you in the future to add a day to the calendar for... for the Paraeducators. Right now, we work only when students are there, so it makes it very difficult to have community professional development when we're only there when the students are. So we're looking this year strategically to find ways to offer at least a couple of times this year some educational opportunities in Common Core development curriculum for the people that are actually working with these students because Paraeducators have not yet gotten that type of training, Permythium boards and a few other things. So as I said, I appreciate and we all appreciate the opportunity and the negotiation teams from the district as well for finally coming together and closing this contract in September. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your remarks. Please vote on item G1. That passes unanimously. Item G3, empower charter school, action on material revision to charter of empower charter school regarding the location of the facility. Superintendent Martin, Ms. Park.
Good evening. Staff recommends approval for empower charter school to relocate at 2285 Mary Ridge. As noted earlier, there have been some difficulties in obtaining city approval. At this point in time, staff has reviewed this location to have met city compliance requirements. The school does intend to have a longer-term financial facilities plan that staff will bring for a subsequent meeting. Today, staff is recommending approval for the school to open tomorrow at the 2285 Mary Ridge Road. We are happy to answer any questions about our process and I believe the school is also here to answer questions.
Okay, we have a motion. We have two speakers, Miles Durfee and Demi Brown.
Hi Superintendent Martin, President Visor, and Board Trustees. We're just here with a thank you. We want to thank the staff that worked hard to bring this agenda item before you. In particular, we wanted to acknowledge the efforts of Susan Park, Deidre Walsh, and Moisa Segiri. Our families, board members, and supporters came today to show their support and so that you can continue to move on with the rest of the agenda, we'd just like to have them stand really quickly. And I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Miles Durfee from the California Charter Schools Association. I wanted to underscore this item and speak very briefly and just tell you two things. First, I want to echo what Demi said about the charter school office staff and their ability to work through a very bureaucratic process that the city has and trying to work with two organizations always gets a little bit more tricky. So they've done a great deal of work, Susan Park, Deidre Walsh, and Moisa Segiri, to make this happen. And, you know, it's always really comforting for me when I can come in front of you and tell you that they did the right things for the students in this case and for all the students. But I did want to underscore the other piece of this is that a number of you have talked, I've talked to a number of you about facilities and some of the struggles that are going on in the process to cite and have high-quality facilities. And I know you talked a lot about it tonight in your presentation for your LCAP for the district facilities and charter schools continue to face those same kind of burdens and we want to work very closely with the district staff, the board, and the city council to make this process more easy, or easy. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor and a second. Any board member comments or questions?
Yeah, just on the comment, we, the, I had talked a bit with Councilman Sherman about this issue and I've talked previously with Councilmember Gloria about this issue of the CUP process that the city has. You know, obviously, we're not suggesting that they accept any use in any site without an appropriate process, but citing charters, especially in infill communities where there's a lot of open commercial space, it sounds like a use that, so I'm hoping that maybe we can open a dialogue, maybe with the superintendent and the city, the city of San Diego on this process to, you know, beyond what we're doing with Prop Z and purchasing properties, there are appropriate places for charter schools and infill communities and the CUP process can be very expensive, very lengthy, and very onerous and difficult at times and so hopefully a middle ground can be found to meet the needs of the education community and still the concerns of the neighborhoods. But this is going to keep happening again and again and again, so it's something that we hopefully can be more proactive on. So that was the only comment I had in that. Thank you and thank you staff for hard work on this.
All right, any other board member comments or questions? Okay, please vote. That is approved 4-0. We have concluded the...
Thank you for waiting so long.
Have fun in school tomorrow, kids.
Yeah.
We do have one non-agenda public speaker. We do have one last voice that cries out to be heard. Jesus Montana, you have three minutes, non-agenda public comment.
Yes, and please hear me. I'm Jesus Montana, president of the Police Officers Association. I understand that Prop 47 will be presented next, at the next meeting, but there's some things that we wanted to make, make it clear before we do this presentation and I'll speak more next time, I'll just lay the foundation. As you already know, we went from a small agency who really didn't know we existed to now be nationally known throughout the United States about student safety here in San Diego Unified. But no one has ever questioned our dedication to student safety, which is why we are very adamant in regards to opposing Prop 47. The reason for it is under AB 109, the realignment that occurred two years ago, it has already released several thousands of inmates who are already non-violent, non-sexual, and non-serious offenders. With Prop 47, it's going to release what the analyst is saying, approximately 10,000 additional inmates. This is being named as the Safe Neighborhood and Schools Act. Releasing more inmates into our communities, I don't understand how that makes us any safer. As it is now, those with criminal histories that are due to potentially be released are those with histories of armed robbery, carjacking, kidnapping, and what's dear to us is those child abusers that we want away from our students. Now, how does this make our schools safe? I really don't understand. The funding for it does not help protect our students. The money that is saved, 25% of that money will go towards schools that has nothing to do with school safety. It goes towards new programs that a school district will want to implement as a grant for truancies and for dropout programs. Don't get me wrong, I am not against going out there and help students keep them in school, but the fact is that the community is being lied to by saying that this proposition will protect our students. It will also put money towards grants for a new program by the district to help crime victims, people who already have been damaged or injured, violated. This doesn't protect our students beforehand and help them afterwards. What it will also do is it will reduce several crimes in regards to drugs and other offenses such as stealing firearms. One of that is an immediate threat to our students. It will minimize the penalties for predatory drugs, also known as date rape. As you already know, we've, San Diego State has already experienced three known sexual attacks on their students. Being a father who's about to have a college student next year who will be moving out, and she will be moving out, to go to college, it scares me as a parent, knowing that a person who's convicted, and I'll be done in about 30 seconds if you don't mind, is going to, anybody who's in possession of a date rape drug, no matter how many times they're caught with it, will be sentenced as a first-time offender and it will be a misdemeanor. Only if they're already caught using it will it be a felony, but if we could stop them beforehand through our operations, they're going to get a slap in the hand if that, maybe just a handhold, "Don't do it again." So I hope that you do not come forward with supporting it. You know, I do look up to you, all of you, but sometimes we don't agree and this is going to be one of them. If you come forward with a support on Proposition 47, it's a proposition that lies to our communities and we're here to protect our students, not hurt them. So I'm hoping that you will join the board of supervisors who today unanimously voted to oppose Prop 47. Thank you.
Thank you. The next regular meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 7, 2014. We are adjourned.